Okay, I call to order the Gladstone City Council Work Session for August 25th, 2020. It is 5:32 PM. Per the Governor's Executive Order 20-16 regarding compliance with Oregon's public meeting laws, the city of Gladstone is abiding by social distance requirements during the coronavirus pandemic. The work session will be conducted virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Members of the city council, staff, and the public all have access to this call. However, since it is a work session, public comment is not a part of our agenda and is not allowed. Tonight, we are here for two items. The first is the presentation of the draft Gladstone Housing Needs Analysis by Eco Northwest Consultants, Beth Goodman, Sadie DiNatale, and a discussion regarding what the next steps are going to be. Kami, could you please call the roll?
I have roll. Councillor Ripley. Councillor Neese.
Present.
Councillor Tracy.
Councillor Tracy has a work commitment tonight.
Councillor Reisner. Councillor Todd.
Here.
Councillor Mercero.
Here.
Mayor Stimple.
Here.
All right, because this is a work session instead of a regular city council meeting, it's going to be a fairly informal process. We will not have business from the audience, but we'll instead have an open discussion with the councillors, staff, Planning Commission, and the consultants. For anyone that is online to speak, I'm sorry for any confusion, but the first meeting of the month is our business meeting, and that's where we have a permanent fixture called Business from the Audience. For those that are participating, thank you very much for being here this evening, and please be patient as we fumble through the Zoom process. Still haven't gotten over all the quirks. One thing I've learned with Zoom is that everyone wants to speak at the same time. So if you could raise your hand if you want to speak, I'll try with all of the faces here to recognize you. And then with the council members, I'll call on you individually so that you have time to ask questions and make comments. I would greatly appreciate everyone's help in keeping the session productive and positive and mostly to the point, please. Thank you. All right, staff. Oh, Tom, Councillor Mercero.
I just wanted to let everyone know that I happen to be the mayor also tonight. My name is Tammy tonight, so.
Yep, there's two of us. Uh-oh, we're in trouble now. All right, staff.
Thank you, Mayor Stimple. My name's Jackie Betts. I'm the city administrator, and I also wanted to point out that we have our Planning Commission with us tonight, and we also invited our Housing Technical Advisory Committee to listen to the presentation. As you're aware, last year, we received some funding from the state to complete our housing needs analysis, a lot of work that we're doing this year on affordable housing. And this document is intended to be a 20-year demand for new housing units, and whether the city's existing supply of land is adequate to accommodate the demand. So we have with us the city's consultant, John Southgate, who I'm going to hand this over to in just a moment, and we also have Beth Goodman from Eco Northwest that's going to present the study. And so with that, John, are you available to take over?
I hate to interrupt for just a quick second, but there's some people online that may not know who the Planning Commission members are. So could you guys, I don't know quite the best way to do this, but could you introduce yourselves, please? Malachi.
There we go. Yep, so I'm Malachi. I'm on the Planning Commission.
And you're Vice Chair, or?
Not at this stage, no.
Okay. And then there's Pat. He's muted.
There's Natalie Smith, Planning Commissioner.
Andra Langston, Planning Commission.
Then we have Michael.
Michael Milch, Planning Chair.
Perfect. And I don't think there's anybody else. Okay, there, sorry about that.
Jackie, I do not see John Southgate on at the moment.
I believe he's on the telephone.
His phone is muted. So somebody here would have to unmute him.
I am trying to unmute him.
There, he's unmuted now.
My apologies. My internet at my home, which is where I'm sitting right now, went out. And so if you could all hear me, I think I could still do the introduction and sort of frame the conversation for tonight, and then I'll probably have some remarks later. But if that's acceptable, I'll proceed.
That's fine, John. Thank you.
Okay, I'm really sorry. I don't know what happened. I turned off my computer and turned it back on, and it's still not coming up, so my apologies. So in my introduction, I'll try to make it brief, and I think most of you are familiar with what, over the last several years, has led to tonight. The city has undertaken several initiatives in the last three years that bear on the creation of more housing choice for Gladstone's current and future residents. The downtown revitalization plan from 2017 was the first in chronological order, which, amongst other things, called for modifications of the zoning code to accommodate more mixed use and slightly, I'd say, somewhat higher-density residential development along Portland Avenue. And then last year, in 2019, the city was awarded, had been awarded a grant from DLCD, Department of Land Conservation, Development Department in the state of Oregon, to do a housing code audit, which resulted in a number of recommendations, again, for creating more housing choice, of a greater variety of affordable housing, and more density. At about the same time, the state legislature passed HB 2001, which called for a number of communities in the state and pretty much all of the Portland metropolitan area to have, I'll say, more flexibility in its zoning codes as relates to housing. So housing has been a front burner issue in the region, in the state, and in the city. One of the things, an important aside, too important aside, every community in the state is required to have a housing needs analysis. We were lucky to get a grant from DLCD to do a housing needs analysis, which I'll turn it over in a minute to Beth Goodman to present her draft findings for the HNA. But we're fortunate to get Beth and her team, because Eco Northwest had already done a more general housing needs assessment for all of Clackamas County, so they were able to build on that work and actually save us some money, some efficiency, and it's actually DLCD's money. They're funding this work. The other important thing I want to say, and then I want to shut up, is when we did a housing code audit last year, we appointed, as the mayor alluded to, an advisory committee to oversee that work. And the advisory committee, probably the strongest recommendation they made in reviewing the draft housing code audit is a desire, a hope, an expectation that there be a thorough community engagement in whatever housing code changes are ultimately made by the city. The plan, and Jackie can correct or refine what I'm saying here, but the plan is that next year, in 2021, we would, the city would undertake change to its housing regulations. But in the meanwhile, in addition to getting grant funding from the state for the housing needs analysis, which you'll hear about tonight, it also got funding to prepare a strategy for community engagement, not to implement it. It won't be implemented until next year, when the city actually undertakes its housing code changes. But the strategy is being worked on by Communitas, a local firm with expertise in community engagement. You'll be hearing more from them later this fall. But those are the two big things going on right now, the housing needs assessment analysis, I'm sorry, which Beth will report on, and then the community engagement strategy, which you'll hear about later. Those two things together will set the stage for the actual code change work that will take place next year. I'm going to stop there. I've thrown a lot at you, and I can't see any faces because of my stupid computer. Are there any questions before Beth describes her research and recommendations? With that, I'm staying on the line and keep trying to get on my Zoom account here. But meanwhile, I'd like to now introduce Beth Goodman, who's, I don't know, is probably about the foremost expert in the state on doing housing needs analysis, and she's with Eco Northwest, a highly reputable economic firm here in the Portland region. With that, Beth, I'll turn it over to you.
John, you make me blush. Thank you for that kind introduction, and I'm really glad that Sadie and I are here to talk with you this evening about Gladstone's housing needs. Sadie and I have worked on dozens of projects across Oregon with cities in the metro region, such as Hillsborough, and Sherwood, and Troutdale, and Tuollet, and other cities. So we are glad to be working with Gladstone at this point. I'm going to try to share my screen, and I can do that. Excellent. So I will share my screen to show the presentation as we talk through it. I've also got all of you guys, I can actually see your faces, which is great. So as you have questions, I'm sure the mayor will be looking out for that and will stop me. There's a lot to talk about, and I believe that, what time is this item, does it need to be done? Was it 6:30 or 7 o'clock? I don't want to disrespect your time.
7 o'clock.
Okay. And it may not go that long. It depends on how much, how many questions you guys have. So what we're starting with here is the housing needs analysis, which, as John mentioned, we started as part of a broader Clackamas County housing needs analysis, where we looked at housing needs for two-thirds of the city or so, in two-thirds of the county, in Clackamas County, two-thirds of the cities in Clackamas County is what I'm really trying to say. And we did a baseline housing needs analysis for those cities, including Gladstone. The results are updated here, based on information from this year, and we will walk through those. But first to ask and answer the question, why is Gladstone doing a housing needs analysis? Well, you've got some reasons here on the screen about, you know, understanding Gladstone, the growth that Gladstone is planning for in the next 20 years, understanding what your buildable land inventory is, all of that. But then, more broadly, you want to make some changes to your zoning code, and making changes to your comprehensive plan and zoning code. A really good idea is to have updated data about what your housing needs are, so you can prove out these changes we want to make are consistent with what our housing needs are. And to take away any anxiety that people had, the plans that you've got going forward, we'll talk about them a little bit later at the end of the presentation, what you're planning for is what you should be planning for. So your plans are right on target. So there's a whole bunch of state regulations around how you do a housing needs analysis. I won't go into those regulations, but understand that they're underneath of much of what we do. We've got a, I don't know, it's a 75 to 100-page document that is the Gladstone Housing Needs Analysis that we're working on finalizing here, and which you all will have the opportunity to review later. And that describes, and among other things, the details of the requirements from the state for the housing needs analysis. This is meeting statewide planning goal 10 about housing. It would be part of your comprehensive plan at the point you adopt it. You could adopt this as an appendix to your comprehensive plan, along with whatever updates to the housing policies in your comprehensive plan the city decides to update. So this is all very land-based. It considers affordability quite a bit. There's a lot more than the 26 slides that we have here. Like I mentioned, there's a 75-page report, which has a lot of information in it. So one of the requirements I do want you to be aware of is that there's this concept of needed housing type in ORS 197303, and it includes single-family detached housing, single-family attached housing, multifamily housing for both owner and renter occupancy, and then the other types of housing that we're showing on here. So a little bit later, why we talk about housing types the way we do is in part in response to making sure we're planning for the needed housing types that we need to plan for. Then we divide it up a little bit further, like multifamily out into things that are duplexes or quadplexes, and then look at multifamily with five or more units per structure, and that becomes about addressing requirements of House Bill 2001. So we're keeping all of these things in mind as we go. What you'll get here in this project is everything above the dotted line. So you've got a housing needs analysis, it's a technical report about buildable lands. We'll talk about that in detail in a moment or two. Housing market, demographic and socioeconomic characteristics of people who live in Gladstone relative to the region. Got a lot about housing affordability, that's on everybody's mind. A forecast of new housing, and a determination of, do you have enough land to accommodate the expected growth? And again, not to surprise anybody, if you have a really small land base, you're talking about a lot of growth. You don't have enough land. There's a number of things that you need to look at, changes to your policies to accommodate that, and they happen to be the things that you're looking at already. So the things below the dotted line, you can use the housing needs analysis to analysis to update your comprehensive plan, your housing chapter and that. You can use it to support changes to your zoning code. You can also use it to support housing policies and programs that aren't addressed through comprehensive plan updates. So for instance, if the city was looking at affordability issues, and you were looking at issues of, do we have a problem with housing affordability? As a starting point, the housing needs analysis provides a lot of information about that and helps you understand where that affordability issue is. Before I start talking about buildable lands inventory, are there questions about what the housing needs analysis is and how you might use it?
I see a very limited screen. So is there somebody that has any questions?
I see everybody. I'm very excited by this.
Do you? Well, then you can tell me. Do we have anybody that has any questions?
Pat has his hand up.
Oh, perfect.
On Slide 6, where you described a number of different houses, is there a ratio that we're supposed to be hitting of that type of housing?
Yes, there is.
I'm assuming that's coming, then.
That is coming.
Good.
That is everybody's favorite part of this presentation.
And the other one is, how do we assess what affordable housing is?
And I believe we have some slides on that.
Okay.
And I can talk about that a little bit more. If I don't quite have the slides I want, I can talk about it more abstractly.
Great, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, so given that, we're going to get down into the nitty-gritty of the buildable lands inventory. What the buildable lands inventory is, is it's a, well, it's an inventory of land inside of Gladstone's city limits that is vacant and unconstrained residential land for development. Those are, that's a pretty specific thing. So I'm going to talk through the methodology about how we go about coming to the buildable lands analysis results, and then I'll show you the results of it. So we start by gathering and assembling the data. We started with Metro's 2016 buildable land inventory. We looked at building permits that had occurred since 2016, because I think that's actually 2015 data, and we removed all of the land that had been developed over that period, since 2015. As part of the Clackamas County process, county staff helped us validate that in 2019 the data was correct. We went through this, again, a validation process in 2020, working with Jackie and Joyce on that, to make sure that we were still showing correct data and updating any development that had happened since we did this work in early 2019. So we classify land into mutually exclusive categories, land that's developed, land that's vacant. We'll talk about that in a few minutes. Then we identify constraints to development, and we'll talk about constraints in more detail. But there are things like steep slopes, so slopes over 25%, flood plain, flood plain and floodway, things like wetlands, et cetera. Anywhere that you have vacant land that's got one of these constraints on it, it's considered vacant and constrained, and therefore it's not available for development over the next 20 years. We looked some at redevelopment potential. That doesn't really fall into this analysis all that much. We don't have a lot to report specifically about it, but redevelopment will be an important component to your approach to addressing the housing needs we have in here. And as I said, we went through verification a few different times, back in 2019, when we were doing this with the county, and now with Jackie and Joy doing it here. And of course, if you identify, as we're going through, anything that's incorrect, we can fix that in the inventory. So we start with your comprehensive plan, which this map is simply a comprehensive plan map, and we show all the areas where housing development is allowed outright. So your low-density, your median-density, and your high-density housing, those are part of your land base for your buildable lands inventory. So things like your industrial land, your open space. Open space may be shown on some of these maps, but industrial, open space, most commercial, those aren't considered developable unless housing is allowed outright in them. So those are not part of your land base. And then we start to look at all of the land that is in your land base, so all of your residential land, and we figure out what land is developed. So land that's not vacant, it's not partially vacant, and it's not public or exempt. So hold that one for a moment. We look at your public or exempt land, and that's land in public or semi-public ownership or land with a conservation easement. So that's things, parkland. Your parkland is technically vacant, but it's not vacant and available for housing development, even if it's zoned or planned residential. Churches, cemeteries, schools, none of those are considered available for development, unless somebody made a specific comment that, oh, that site is surplus and is available for development. I don't think that was the case in this project at all. We look at your vacant land. So that's tax lots that are larger than 2,000 square feet, and if they have any development on it, it's less than 10% of the lot, and the lot is 95% or more vacant. Another way of saying this is, any development that's on it is very minor. So those are your vacant lots. And then there's a complicated method that's consistent with what Metro does of looking at land that's partially vacant. So that's land generally, single-family tax lots with an existing dwelling, where a lot is two and a half times the minimum lot size, and the building value is greater than, I'm bad at the greater than, less than $300,000. Or you've got a few other cases where it could be partially vacant, where the single-family tax lot is over five times the minimum lot size, and there's only one unit on it. We assume that a portion of the existing lot is developed, because there's a unit on it already, and that's not going to go away, and then the undeveloped area is the part we would call partially vacant. I'm going to step onto the next slide and show you the results of that. So these are your areas that are public or exempt in the green, and they're zoned or designated residential, developed in the gray, partially vacant in the, on the orange, and vacant in the red. You probably can't see this very well on this map, but areas where you have these hash marks, those are constraints, which we'll go into constraints in a moment or two. And so here are your constraints. Your primary constraints are wetlands, flood plain, Title III lands that have stream and flood plain protection on them, and Title 13 riparian and upland wildlife habitat, and of course, where you've got slopes over 25%. Those areas are considered constrained and not available for development. And so when you just look at the vacant unconstrained vacant and partially vacant land, this is what you see. A little smattering. Can you guys see this? Little yellow bits are low-density, the orange bits are medium-density, and I don't think we've got any brown bits, which are the high-density. So these are where you've got vacant unconstrained land. So with that, are there questions about how we got to this? Okay. Anybody surprised by this? It's little bits. You guys have a really fragmented little land base. Not to criticize your land base or anything.
Actually, if I may jump in here, this is a really important picture. Keep this in mind.
Yeah.
Because the story it tells is, there's very little land available for new residents' development. And when I first started working with you all and with Jackie a couple of years ago, one of the things that struck me is, this is landlocked, you're surrounded, you know, you have water on some sides, and very few parcels, just even driving around superficially, you quickly notice there's not a lot of vacant residential land.
Well, it's time to start annexing, isn't it?
That won't solve your problem, probably. Or it won't solve your problem entirely. So looking at it all told, you have 16 buildable acres. So those are vacant and partially vacant and unconstrained. 14 of them are low-density, and one of them are medium-density, and you might say, 14 and one don't add up to 16. Beth, what kind of economist are you? And I would say that there's decimal points here, that it's just rounding. So before I go on and talk about demand for housing, I'm happy to answer any other questions, or we can always come back to this, because we'll be, I think Tracy has a question?
I just was wondering, so if we have 16 buildable acres, how many acres total are there in Gladstone?
I have that in the report, and I don't have that in my, at my fingertips. Sadie might be able to look that up as we're talking and get back to you, but I don't want to waste your time trying to look it up while I talk.
Okay.
Because I can't multitask. Mayor?
I have a couple of questions, but I'm wondering if you're going to answer to them later. And the first is, I don't see any reference to ADUs in any of this, and I'm wondering if it's inferred as an outright allowed use in all residential zones. And then the other thing is, commercial zones. We have a deficit of commercial property, and we, I know that's not part of your housing needs assessment, but we, within the last, what, eight years, I think, is we had a successful rezoning of an R5 to a C1. And I'm seeing that that may be something that we're going to come up against in the future because of this deficit. So how are you accommodating for that? Though you may answer that later, or it may be in the report. I'm just curious.
So I'm going to start with your second question first. We're not specifically accommodating for the lack of commercial land. You essentially have a lack of commercial and a lack of high-density land. You could, if you chose to, look at that as an opportunity and look at it as an opportunity for redevelopment, and I think that's something we'll be talking about at the end, what else is the city doing? I know that John has some thoughts about that.
Okay.
And then accessory dwelling units, they're not a needed housing type, but they're a housing type that is required to be allowed.
Right.
And so accessory dwelling units can provide some outlet for some of this unmet housing need, and let's talk about that a little bit, a little bit later.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'm going to go ahead on, unless I see somebody wildly waving, if you don't see, and talk about the forecast. And again, we're keeping this very, very high level. So let's start with the 20-year forecast of housing need. Metro did a housing forecast in 2016. You're required to use Metro's forecast of new housing. It's the official forecast for Gladstone, for any city within the Metro UGB. So you're required to use that forecast, and we simply extrapolated it out to the And we simply extrapolated it out to the 2021 through 2041 period. And we see based on that that you're looking at about 321 new dwelling units. So we start right there with 321 new dwelling units. And then we get to that mix that somebody was asking about, that I think Pat was asking about a few minutes ago. So 321 dwelling units, what kind of mix of new housing might that be? Well, there are some requirements in OAR 66007, which is specific to metro cities. And part of that says that metro cities must designate sufficient buildable land to provide the opportunity for development of at least 50% of new residential units to be attached single-family, so that's like townhouses, or multifamily housing. And multifamily housing is everything from duplexes on up to a structure with, you know, more than five units in it. So you're required that, another way of saying this is no more than 50% of your new housing can be single-family detached. That's the maximum. You can assume that more of your new housing will be multifamily or single-family attached if you choose to. So that's where we have to start. And in talking about this with Jackie and with Joyce and with John, what we're forecasting is that 40% of your existing housing will be single-family detached, 10% would be single-family attached, 10% would be duplex, tri's and quads, and 40% new multifamily housing. I'm just slipping this up so I can look at my note. Currently, most of your housing, 72% is single-family detached. It's about when you were, when you were developed, when your city was developed. 4% is townhouses, 5% is duplex through tri's, and 19% is multifamily. It sounds like what you're planning for in the future and the plans that you've discussed really are emphasizing more multifamily housing types as well as complying with House Bill 2001 to allow duplexes through quads and single-family attached in more areas, which can allow for more development of those.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Can you go back to this slide with the metro forecast?
Yes.
So this first number for 2021, is that saying that the expectation is 4,500 new dwellings in Gladstone next year?
No, 4,500 total dwellings in Gladstone next year and 4,800, almost 4,900 in 2041. So that's a change of 321 units.
And do you know what we're at right now?
I would have to look that up. Again, Sadie may be able to look that up, but also realize that this is a 2016 forecast, so it may be a little bit older.
I was just wondering whether metro numbers were realistic, because looking at our census, we've grown 2,000 people in the last 30 years. And I'm just wondering how realistic are the metro numbers?
Well, we can look at it in the context of the capacity of your housing. And we can also look at it in the context of what is the city planning for. 321 new units is a relatively modest amount of growth. Let's say that you guys, you guys had gobs of land, which you don't, but let's say you did, and you say, oh, 321 units, we can grow more than that. We've got gobs of land. And there's nothing that says you can't plan to grow more than that. It's just you have to make sure that you're providing opportunity for development of at least this much.
Yeah, I definitely understand that we would want to grow. I'm just trying to understand, you know, if we assume average of, say, two people per dwelling, right? That's a third of how much we've grown in the last 30 years.
Mm-hmm.
Right? I'm just wondering if it's realistic.
And Beth, if I may, if I may add to that, this is John Southgate again, the disembodied John Southgate. I agree with your comment, Commissioner, that I think that these are conservative numbers, and Beth could speak more eloquently than I could to how Metro generates these numbers. But I, you may recall, when I first started working with the city a couple of years ago, one of my assignments was to talk to developers about the prospects for redevelopment along Portland Avenue in new, you know, two, three, four-story multifamily dwellings. And the zoning code currently doesn't really allow that kind of development, and that's one of the things we're going to talk about later this evening, I hope. But intoxicated developers, both for-profit and nonprofit, both market rate and affordable, I think there's going to be a demand for development on Gladstone. I think, I think that Gladstone has the prospect of medium-density development, sort of like what you're seeing in Milwaukee and elsewhere. It's not high-rise, to be sure, but mixed-use, medium-density, mixed-income development, I think there's going to be demand. So I think, I think the number is going to be more than 321 dwelling units demanded.
Okay, thank you.
And that's okay if it's more than that. Based on what you guys have been talking about and what you're planning for and what John was just talking about, it doesn't seem likely that it would necessarily be less I think Michael has a question.
On that chart that you had, yeah, on that chart that you had that showed the number of different types of units, when you consider duplexes, triplexes and quadplexes, and you're talking about total units, if it's a duplex, do you count it as two or a triplex counted as three housing units? Or is it just the total building itself that's counted as a unit?
It's the units. So that would be 32 units in some mix of duplexes, triplexes and quads. Maybe it would be two duplexes, if we get into this, I won't do my math very well. Maybe it'd be two duplexes, five triplexes and a few quadplexes.
Okay, so if they were all triplexes, it would be about 10 of them approximately.
Yep.
Okay.
You can do your math.
Yeah, so when you're talking about 128 multifamily, you could talk about, we had one project that went in with 122 apartments in it. That was the largest recent one. So something of that size would sort of do this in one fell swoop.
One fell swoop.
More likely to be, more likely to be, to need to be smaller because we don't have the land. Okay, that's clear. Thank you.
And Sadie, do you have anything about existing number of dwelling units before I'm on?
Yes, yes. So in 2018, which is the most recent American Community Survey data, Gladstone had 4,800, about 4,800 units. So based on the household forecast for 2021, that's about a 5% housing vacancy.
So essentially, what we're saying is, and you have to remember, the American Community Survey is a survey and it's a sample. So what we're saying is that the American Community Survey's sample may be off, you may have more housing units than Metro thinks based on their forecast, but it's this increment of units, this 321 new units that ends up being important. That's what we're really planning for, 321 units over what you have at the beginning of 2021.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly. Are there more questions here? So let's touch on the edge of housing affordability. What this chart shows is those 321 units divided up into these categories of income level. And so this is based on the median family income level for the Portland region. And Sadie, you might want to open up this so we can fill in numbers about dollars in a moment or two. And in your existing, what your existing distribution of households is that about 20%, 22% of your households have income above 120% of median family income. About 22%, that's very symmetrical, have income below 30% of median family income. So when you talk about what is affordable housing, you can talk about affordable housing in a couple of different ways. At one level, affordable housing, when people think about it, is certainly government subsidized housing. So say that housing that Oregon Housing and Community Services helps build, that your housing authority, which I'm blanking on their name, are they homes for good? That may be Lane County.
Home Forward.
Home Forward, there we go. Thank you. I, they both changed their name at about the same time. So things that Home Forward builds. So housing that's affordable at less than 50% of median family income. And Sadie, median family income for the year that we're working on here in the Portland region is?
92,100.
92,000. So that's essentially $45,000 for a family of four or less. You can broaden the discussion of affordable housing to talk about housing that is affordable to middle-income households. So this is typically referred to as workforce housing. The housing types themselves are often called naturally occurring affordable housing. So they weren't built by a housing authority or by the state, but they may have been built a long time ago, say a duplex, that the rent is simply affordable to somebody who earns around 80% of median family income, so 80% of 92,000. But this type of housing, for rental housing, is generally in the 50% to 80% of median family income. So that's 45,000 to about 60, 65,000. And then for ownership, you start getting into ownership certainly above 80,000 and near 120,000, depending on housing prices. So your full definition of affordable housing is your government subsidized affordable housing, that's less than 50% of median family income. And your naturally occurring or your workforce affordable housing, that's in the 50% to 120% of median family income. So that's the full picture. The market generally doesn't build housing that's affordable at less than 50% of median family income. It's just not financially feasible in most cases. The market doesn't build a lot of this middle-income housing in the 50% to 80% of median family income. It may well build some of the 80% to 120%. John lives his life more in this particular part of housing development than I do. So he may have some comments about what the market is likely to build without a public subsidy.
Yeah, really quickly, as I think most of us know, maybe all of us know, construction prices, construction pricing has escalated more aggressively than rents and sales prices in recent years. So we're kind of chasing our tail. So, you know, at the high end, you're always going to be able to develop luxury housing and make a profit. The lower you get, the harder it is. And now or later, we could talk a little bit about the different types of subsidies available. There's low-income tax, housing tax credits, the state controls that spigot. Metro has, you know, the voters approved a bond a couple of years ago. Metro has dollars. Clackamas County gets an allocation of that. In fact, one of the first projects, maybe the first project in Clackamas County was a rehab of old apartment complex of, I believe, about 40 units. Jack, you would have the particulars on that. But there are housing, funding sources for middle and lower-income housing, but those more and more are necessary, given, again, the cost of construction.
And wanting to balance high rents and what's achievable against need for housing that's affordable for people who want to live and work in Gladstone or nearby.
Right.
So there's a lot more information about affordability in the, in the housing needs analysis. But did this begin to answer the question about what's affordable housing? I think Pat may have asked it, but I could be wrong. Okay.
Yes, it answered my question. Thank you.
Certainly, certainly. So then we go on to the last part of this conversation, do we have enough land? So this is a table that's important in the analysis, but it's complex. The only reason I'm flashing it up here is to say that we are assuming that Gladstone will comply with House Bill 2001 regulations to allow these housing types in zones where single-family housing is permitted, as well as you allow currently accessory dwelling So when we are looking at this, we go back to our 16 acres of vacant buildable land. We did some analysis about the densities of development in Gladstone between 2000 and 2020. And what we found, generally speaking, is that for low-density housing, development densities were at about 5.2 dwelling units an acre. That's an average of about 8,000 square foot lots. In medium density, we were looking at about 8.9 dwelling units per acre. And then in high density, you are actually achieving more like a higher density of 24.9 dwelling units an acre. These densities vary based on the net-to-gross factors that Metro uses to convert from densities that are about vacant land but don't account for rights of way in order to account for rights of way later. So these densities account for new rights of way. Quite frankly, given your inventory of buildable land, given how built out the city is, you don't need to put in a whole bunch of new streets to accommodate, to accommodate new land. It's not like you're doing a big new subdivision. So when we start to apply these to your 16 acres, what we see is that in low density, that 14 acres, 14 times 5.2 comes out to about 66 dwelling units. Your medium density, about 10 dwelling units. And you have no vacant land in high density, so you have zero dwelling units capacity in high density. And then when we compare that capacity to the demand by plan designation, what we see is that you've got a deficit, all the red numbers are deficits, of land for housing, overall a deficit of 244 dwelling units, 30 of which are in low density. We estimate that's about six acres, 90 of which are in medium density, about 10 acres. And five, sorry, 124 of your deficit is in high density where you have no land that's vacant, and that's about five acres. These are relatively modest deficits, especially in light of what you're doing already. So how can you accommodate these housing needs? Looking at reducing minimum parking requirements so you can get higher density in some types of development. Codifying cottage cluster housing standards so you can have that kind of development happen. Allow conversion of single-family homes to homes of multiple units. Implementation of your downtown revitalization plan, that's going to take care of a lot of them, because when you look at the high density at 124 units, if you got four developments at 30 dwelling units per development over the next 20 years, then you take care of that deficit that way. And that's where you have to carefully consider in your downtown revitalization plan, I'm stepping outside my lane for a moment, but you have to carefully consider your deficit of commercial land. And so how you can, how you can make an outcome that is positive for both through some sort of mixed-use development and other innovative developments. And so that is the answer to your housing needs analysis. That is, in the end, what we're showing, a deficit of land, a need to reconsider your zoning, identify opportunities for redevelopment, that kind of thing, as well as there are housing affordability issues, but we're not focusing on that right here. So Pat, looks like he's got a question.
Is there any way to estimate the amount of land in the city that may be recyclable? In other words, have structures on them that would be taken down due to age or what we occasionally refer to as zombie houses? due to age or what we occasionally refer to as zombie houses?
So Metro's buildable lands inventory provided an estimate of that. I've found their estimates, because of the methodology they're using, to be kind of problematic. So we don't really present it in the housing needs analysis because it raises more questions than it answers. This might be something that John's been looking at, and I give him an opportunity to talk about it. But zombie houses tend to be things, if you're referring to what I think you're referring to, things that were foreclosed upon or in the foreclosure process. So you could look at data about foreclosures.
I was referring more to abandoned properties, properties that have been used. But there's also things, in the planning commission here in the past year, there was one teardown that they put a triplex on kind of behind the old city hall. That's more what I was referring to, I think, than zombie houses.
Yeah, redevelopment opportunities. John, is that something you'd like to talk about?
Yeah, I don't have statistics. I think that those certainly exist. I mean, just even driving around. My impression, Beth and Sadie and Jackie and Joy Fields and I met, I don't know, about a week ago and talked about these draft findings. And I think honestly, there's going to be sporadic demand and supply for redevelopment within Gladstone's single-family neighborhoods. Honestly, I don't see a lot of new, you know, duplexes, triplexes, whatever, in those neighborhoods. And I'm saying that partly to allay the concerns that I presume some might have, that, gosh, there's going to be wholesale redevelopment of my single-family neighborhood. I don't see that happening. I think the numbers that Beth has prepared, I think they lend themselves to moving forward on, certainly on, you know, allowing missing middle and complying with HB 2001. But primarily, my main focus is the downtown. Beth identified a deficit of five acres. Assuming, if I'm doing my math right, about 25 units an acre. And, you know, Commissioner Mills pointed out that you could achieve that in one more project, like the 122-unit project that he referred to. I look at 124 acre, 124 units, and I think in terms of about 40 unit projects. In talking to housing developers, you need to get around 40 units, maybe a little bit more, to justify having an onsite manager. And so three modest, two- or three-story apartment projects on half-walks in downtown Gladstone would meet the projected need. And to me, I think there's a happy marriage here of Beth finding existing policy that the city council adopted, the downtown revitalization plan a couple of years ago. We haven't implemented it yet, but the policy is already in place. And on top of that, it's one thing to have policies, it's one thing to have projections from Beth and Sadie, but it's another thing, will developers actually build it? And what I want to come back to, the thing that gets me excited is knowing that, especially with the Trolley Bridge coming in, downtown revitalization, Jack, he's told me about the new restaurant. I think developers, once we fix the zoning, once we align the zoning, I should say, you align the zoning with the demand that Beth has demonstrated, I think you're going to have exciting, medium-density, mixed-use development in downtown Gladstone. And I think downtown Gladstone is really poised for great things in the coming years.
And John, you call what they call high density, you're referring to that as medium density because that's a little bit more like what it is.
Yeah, high density.
Not on high rise.
Yeah, yeah, scary term. Medium density is the term I would use to apply. Yes, thank you for clarifying. I should call it high density, but that's two, three, and four-story stuff. That's not, you know, that's not even necessarily... The new project, I think it's Axle Tree, downtown Milwaukee, that is 109 units. And that's admittedly, that's a bigger building. It's five stories. You don't even have to go to that height to quickly get to the 122 units identified for, or 124 units identified for the downtown corridor. So I think it's a realistic goal, and I don't think it would be sort of scale of development that would be, you know, maybe a little bit disconcerting to some folks in Gladstone.
So I have a question. It seems like we're focusing on Portland Avenue, which is smart, I agree. But we also have McLaughlin Boulevard, which has a lot of large lots that I think could be used much better. And then also, we have the Seventh Day Adventist property. And with the planning commission online here, I'd heard rumors about a high-density development that they were looking at for that property. Has it come before planning? Or any rumors come before planning? Because I think that was going to be fairly large.
I've heard rumors regarding that development. It'll be more geared towards, what you want to call it, senior living, but it hasn't, nothing has come before the planning commission about it yet. But I've heard rumors. I don't know if it's fact.
Okay, thank you.
So that might be... I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
Well, just, I think the McLaughlin Boulevard, I'm really glad you mentioned that, Madam Mayor, because I think, as you probably know, McLaughlin is one of the corridors identified for funding if this transportation measure passes. And even if it doesn't, I think McLaughlin, it has the potential to be a really different street in coming decades. Right now, it's a challenging place for housing. But I think that can change. As you may know, the Clackamas County, they're doing some planning around the Park Avenue Station right now. And I think that might serve as a template for somewhat like Portland Boulevard. Obviously, McLaughlin's very different in character from Portland and always will be. It's a state highway after all. But I think McLaughlin has potential to be a much more urban pedestrian-friendly place than it is today. It's never going to be Portland Avenue or Alberta Street in Portland or something like that, but it doesn't have to be relegated to what it is today.
Michael had a question.
A couple of things we discovered recently with a matter that came before the planning commission was that one of the very large apartment complexes that went in about five years ago built its parking according to our minimum parking requirements. But because it was so large, required a lot of maintenance and a lot of staff and a lot of vehicles and storage just for maintaining the building. And because a lot of people, because it was occupied by more individuals than they expected, they ran out of parking and weren't able to rent about 10% of the units because they couldn't provide parking for the people who wanted to rent them. So the planning commission had to hear some recommendations on rezoning of an adjacent property to allow for providing more parking for that building. But I agree with John, what John said earlier. I think smaller multifamily buildings, something with 20 units or 30 units or 40 units, can get by with a resident manager who takes up one parking space, not six or 10. And even if there's a little bit of an overflow, it doesn't have as much of an impact on the surrounding area. One of the things about this particular complex was that there was no real street parking nearby available because of its location. But the other thing is, when you have what the developer expected to have one person living in a one-bedroom apartment and paying, let's say, $1,200 a month for rent, what they ended up with was two working individuals, each of whom owned a car and commuted to work, living in there, or sometimes three, I think. So instead of paying $1,200 a month rent, two people are paying $600 each, or three people are paying $400 each. And it becomes sort of de facto affordable housing because of the living arrangements. So we have our definitions of what constitutes affordable housing, yet even, you know, one of the newest apartment complexes with lots of amenities and a swimming pool and a good location can almost default to being affordable housing for some people because of their choice of living arrangements. The good news is, a lot of those people have since moved out and indicated they were going to be able to buy homes. So for some people, affordable housing, in that sense, is a stepping stone to purchasing a home. And it's, you know, it's what you do while you're saving up for that down payment. But it's a lot more complicated than trying to use generalizations about a lot of these things. When you see an individual thing and the way and how it works out, we get surprised sometimes that what we think we have, when we have good standards and good codes, don't always work out the way we expect them to.
I think I'd like to tack on to that. So something he mentioned was that the apartment found that they had, on average, I think it was 1.54 parking needed per unit in order to satisfy the requirements, which is higher than our minimum for them. And one of the things I think is missing in these discussions, you know, we have the comment here about reducing minimum parking, but we don't see here is how many of the residents are commuting outside of the area to work. So we don't actually know whether reduction in parking is realistic. And using that last month's planning question as an example, it wasn't for that recent apartment complex. I would like to see things like the commuting needs represented in housing needs.
And I am turning away from you because I was going to bring up the data that I'm sure is in the housing needs to show you that we, there we go. We have that information in the document. About 2,800 people commute into Gladstone. This is 2015 data. And about 5,400 people commute out of Gladstone. So I'm sure that that's changed somewhat from 2015. But the most up-to-date data isn't much newer than this. So you have a lot of people commuting out and some people certainly commuting in.
Yes, that comment there, about the 10%. So that would be, the reduction in parking would really assume that that 10% are really the only ones we're targeting, right?
Well, the comment about reduction in parking is a comment about things that you guys have already been discussing. It was something that came out of the work that you've been doing recently.
Yeah, it's been biting us. It's just why we're talking about it a lot.
I was quietly smiling to myself when I saw that one and thought, that one's going to cause some discussion. Parking requirements always do. The thing to keep in mind, and I'll invite John to correct me on my numbers here because these are a couple of years old. But structured parking in the Portland area, last I know, it was costing like $45,000 a space. And structured underground parking was costing $60,000 a space. So when you look at the effect of parking on housing affordability, you can see how very dramatic it is. And that's why, even though it's a big area of community concern and needs conversation, that it is an important thing to consider. Are there other questions or comments? What I'm hearing so far is you guys are excited to have your policy discussion, which is exactly where I hope you guys would be. And that bodes well for your next steps in engaging in those discussions.
And let me add to, I think, sort of repeating myself, that I think when you have an alignment of growth projection, housing, you know, demand, policy initiatives from the recent past, specifically for the downtown, and along with the state mandate, HB 2001, but also developer interest, that's actually a really nice alignment. You don't always have those things. You might have two of them. You might have the policy direction and you might have the demand, but there's not developer interest. Or, you know, you might be missing the policy side. I really think that Gladstone, you know, has really demonstrated leadership on these issues. And you have developers who, if we can align, as Beth says, let's move forward on the policy stuff related to downtown. And I think you're going to see things happen. This is not pie in the sky.
And so this is all I had for you. If you have more questions, I'm happy to answer them. Or I can go on to the last slide, which is what's the next steps.
Hold on, hold on to this slide here. This land sufficiency results slide really is a nice snapshot of everything that we talked about and what the next steps are going to be. But yeah, Beth, go ahead and talk about the next steps first.
Okay, so the next steps are we're finalizing the housing needs analysis. We'll have a community workshop in September to talk about the results of the housing needs analysis. And I'm hoping we'll have an opportunity to talk a little bit more in more detail about the policy work that the city is doing. Because quite frankly, I'm not sure how interesting buildable land is to most of your community members. But the policy pieces, the how are we going to do this? Those are very interesting. So we'll be doing that. And then there's a hearing about the housing needs analysis for adopting it in early 2021.
So specifically, we're going to have our community workshop via Zoom on September 17th. And then the planning commission will get their opportunity to revisit this again and make a recommendation to the city council. And that will happen at the October 20th Planning Commission meeting. Then we'll finalize everything and bring it to the city council at their first meeting in January 2021. And I think the other takeaway that John mentioned at the beginning of this is this is why we applied for money to help with a community engagement strategy. We all see the potential in revitalization in the downtown area, but it is a contentious topic and parking is an issue. And in order to make that happen thoughtfully and productively, we need to have a community engagement strategy that includes all of the people that have concerns about the downtown revitalization plan. And so that is the second piece of this that we are working on right now so that we can parallel it after the city council makes decisions in January, then to go out and launch the community engagement strategy to explain why we're doing what we're doing in the downtown area. So it is all being packaged and coming together. There's a lot of work that's been done on this, but that last slide that Beth showed on the land sufficiency results really is your summary snapshot, your talking points.
I have a quick question. Community engagement is always an issue with everything that we're doing. The lack of, not on our part, we're trying to engage people, but people just don't show up. What are we going to, are we thinking outside of the box of ways to get people pulled in so that they actually participate in this? That's the only way that people are going to buy into this, is the more, obviously, that are engaged.
I think, Madam, that, well, that's exactly, that's the charge to the firm that's preparing the strategy, is help us think outside the box. Help us to reach out to communities that typically don't get involved. Don't just do the same-old, same-old and have seven people show up to these meetings. And I think the advisory committee last year in requesting a rigorous community engagement effort was because they felt the same way as what you just said. Let's make sure we really have people, let's get turnout. Do we have to go to them? You know, should we go to the church function, whatever? Where are people, where we could go reach to them and say, hey, this is important stuff. This is going to affect the future of Gladstone. But I think what you just said defines what this community engagement strategy is supposed to be about.
Provide food. That's what I keep hearing, provide food and drinks.
And almost specifically invite the stakeholders that it will impact.
Which is everybody, Natalie. This is going to impact everybody.
So thinking about COVID for a moment, we obviously will have to do it differently than normal.
True.
Well, if it's after January, we might be in a different phase. But the consultant is drafting the plan by the end of this year. But we have taken that into consideration, that it may be different platforms on how we outreach to people. But we're excited about the community engagement strategy because we know that the people in Gladstone hear one thing and do something different. And so we are creatively trying to outreach to those people so that they understand this. And those are... And those are tools for the planning commission, for the city council, and for the task force members that really care about what's going to happen, um, on the Portland Avenue area and the livability in Gladstone.
And Mayor?
Yes.
This is Michael. Um, uh, one of the other models for this is, uh, the community engagement done by the two library task forces that have been, uh, working, uh, in Oak Lodge and in Gladstone on the new library projects in those communities. Um, the, the county went to a great deal of effort to, uh, bring in underserved communities, uh, usually underrepresented communities. They had online surveys, they had in public gatherings before COVID for people to be involved. So, uh, having one event and just inviting people and hoping they show up, or sometimes hoping they don't, uh, depending on what you expect them to, to feel like, um, that, you know, isn't always adequate. But we can learn, I think, from, uh, from the way, some of the methods the county used, and we could get some feedback from task force members on how, how they felt that, uh, those kinds of, uh, public engagement events went. Uh, so there, there are a lot of good resources and, and some good experience to draw upon from, from recent, uh, events.
Yeah, we need to definitely take that, 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 the additional effort to make sure that people get involved.
Yeah. Um, I was going to say something, you know, I still feel like I'm the new guy on, on this, even though I know it's coming up on two years. I think it's going to be really important that we go back and really explain how spill 2001, also both revitalization, um, you know, projects with multiple people being involved from, uh, 2006 till 2016, whatever it was. Um, because a lot of times people will like stuff is sprung on them, even though there's been all of this and we've been talking about it for 10 years, essentially. Um, I think that that is sort of making sure that we go back. Not everybody's watching these. Not everybody knows. When we had our meeting at the GCCF, I ran into people I've known for 50 years that were like all up in arms afraid of, you know, what was happening, what were we doing? Not really having a clue that household 2001, you know, was basically steering us in a lot of these ways. So making sure that we really go back to give the history of where we're at so that it doesn't just feel like it's, it'll probably always feel like it sprung on them, uh, even though we know that it's not. But I, I think that that's huge, you know, the history of it. And I noticed the library does that a lot too. It's very much the history of it and that this timeframe, the school bond did that a lot too. And it gives people a way to look back. So it's not just something we got bored during COVID and decided to, you know, up our occupancy, you know, or whatever. So that would be my, my suggestion.
Well, it sounds like we are definitely not the exciting part. Um, uh, so, uh, and you're in really good hands with Deb Myhoff. Um, so, um, I, I really love working with her on, uh, engagement. John, I'm sorry, I spoke over you.
No, no, that's okay. Um, I, once again, I apologize that I can't see you all. But I, I agree, Deb Myhoff is, uh, with Communitas is, is really the best in the business. You are going to get, I'm just looking through her scope, but Jackie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that her, Deb's final work product will be coming before the council and presenting her draft community engagement strategy so that, that even in this meeting, in the last few minutes, there's been some great suggestions about how to have the most effective community engagement effort. So, um, I think you're going to get a crack at that and, and get an opportunity to refine it even beyond the good work that I know Deb will do.
So are there any other questions you want to discuss, uh, for the housing needs analysis? I'm sure if you have further thoughts on this, um, Jackie can tell you who to email. I'm not sure if it's Jackie or John.
Yeah, either one of us is fine. Um, and Beth, we think the work you and Sadie are doing is pretty exciting too. So thank you for that.
That's good. Sure.
Amazing job. Thank you so much.
Certainly, thank you. And, and I think Michael has a question.
Actually, just a, um, a comment to answer Tracy Todd's question earlier. Uh, there are 640 acres in a square mile. Gladstone is about two and a half square miles. That's about 1,600 total acres for the city of Gladstone. Some of that is water, of course, but, uh, so 16 acres of available land is about 1% of the total population. And, and Beth, I'd like to know, how does that compare with other cities? You describe us as beings kind of landlocked. Uh, do other cities have a much higher percentage of their total land that's still available? Uh, are we?
Oh, yes.
Unique in that regard?
That sounds very unique.
One city has been, one city has been worse, but they were much smaller than you. Um, King City, um, before the recent UGV expansion had three acres vacant. So 16 is, you know, if I did a per capita thing, which obviously I haven't done, 16 is pretty close up there. Um, so it's a, a very, very small amount of land.
Puts it in perspective. Thank you.
Certainly, certainly.
I know where there's a bunch of industrial land I'd like to annex and rezone. A lot of it. All right, well, so.
I'm assuming this is some.
It's my big dream.
Um.
How to make Gladstone bigger. Okay, well, this is awesome. So we know what our next steps are. Jackie's got us laid out on when the meetings are coming up. Is there anything else that you need to go over on this one?
Nope, I think, uh, that's been it from staff's perspective tonight.
Okay. Anything from council? Um, we have, Council Reisner came on at the last minute. Do you have any questions or concerns?
None at this time, thank you.
All right. Mayor Tammy Stempel, IE, or AKA Council Mercer.
Uh, the, the one thing I would like to suggest is that we assume there's not much buildable land out there. But actually I believe there's more than you believe or know about. In that specifically on Portland Avenue, uh, most of the buildings, uh, are one level. A lot of them are just houses at this point. And if you were to go skyward, even three levels, that would bring in a lot more land. And it, there's some issues regarding fire and whatever, if you go higher in three levels. But there's nothing that says if you're thinking that way, outside the box maybe, that if you go to higher levels, then you can resolve some issues that people are concerned about now, such as parking. There's nothing that says parking can't be on higher levels and/or below the street. There's issues in both of those cases, but it can happen. So you could get the 321 dwellings, I believe, I would guess at this point strictly on Portland Avenue, if you thought that was a way to go. And there's a lot of pros and cons to doing something like that. But I think, uh, I, I've felt for years that there's more pros than there are cons. So I, I think there's more land available above Portland Avenue than we're considering at the moment. That's all.
So what you're talking about is essentially, uh, redevelopment potential. Um, and that's certainly, uh, a very important part of this.
Right. People got to get involved. And if their land is right now, its value is based on one level in most cases. So whatever the value is, say whether it's 200,000 or, or 500,000, if you go up four stories.
Right.
And there's a lot more opportunity for those people also to consider.
Certainly, and I, I think that very much reinforces what we were talking about, about revitalization and redevelopment. It, it just doesn't show up in the same way on your vacant land, um, uh, maps, that's all.
Okay. Um, next in line is Council Tracy Todd.
I, I'm good. I, I think I've asked all my questions. Thank you.
All right, and Council Lyndon Neese? You're muted.
I, I'm okay. I just want to listen a little more, get some better understanding of a few things. That's all.
Okay, thank you. And then I'm going to go, I think I got all the counselors. I'll go through, any commission, Malachi?
Uh, yeah, so Jackie, can we make sure to have Jim work with the Oregon City Rep to get the HNA maps into our RPIs overlays?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, um, Count, or Commissioner Smith, Pat Smith.
I don't have any questions. Thank you very much.
All right. Um, Chair Michael Milch.
Nothing additional, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Natalie Smith.
I don't have anything further at this time. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Langston.
Uh, don't have any questions or anything to add today. Thank you.
All right, well, I think I have everybody covered. Anybody else have any questions they forgot? Raise your hands. I don't see anything. All right, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn then, please? That would be a counselor.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Council Tracy Todd and seconded by Council Neil Reisner to adjourn. Any further discussion? All right, Tammy, could you do your roll call vote, please?
Counselor Neese? Yes. Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Mercer?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes, meeting adjourned at 6:45 PM.